We're meeting seven o'clock. I'd like to call order. The July eighth, two thousand twenty-four Oxford Township, Chairman of Townshipal Oxford Zoning Board of Appeals meeting. Would anyone please stand? May your respects be fly?
I wish to reply of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please note the roll.
Noted. There is a quorum.
A quorum. Motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
And second. All in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Item five, the approval of the minutes of our regular meeting of April eighth, two thousand twenty-four.
How about the minutes of April eighth, two thousand twenty-four of regular meeting minutes?
Motion? Second?
Second.
Second. Motion and second. All in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Moving on to item number six, which is public comments for items not on the agenda. Seeing none, we'll move on to new business. Item seven, seven A. Case twenty-four, ZBA zero zero three. Property is located at six forty-three South Lapeer Road, Oxford, Michigan. Parcel oh four, twenty-six, three oh three, zero one two. The applicant is applying for certain variances to be eligible to install a commercial sign that has automated car wash. The applicant seeking variances from section eighty-five, eight, zero zero one with the Oxford Township ordinance, where a setback required under fifteen feet for the installation of the sign, and there is a maximum required height of six feet. The variance requested are as follows. One, setback of the sign to be nine feet from the road and five point five feet from the adjacent lot line, as opposed to fifteen feet. And the height of the sign to be eleven feet as opposed to six feet. How are meetings are run? I will introduce the items. I did. The applicant will then present their case. As Zoning Board of Appeals member, have an opportunity to answer any questions or ask any questions. We'll open. The public comment will be opened. All comments should be directed towards the chairman. Public comments will be limited to three minutes. I'll close the public comments. Board member questions? The applicant will have an opportunity to respond to those. Board member will then deliberate. There'll be a motion, and then there'll be a vote. So? The floor is yours.
That's awesome. Thanks for coming. I thought you said, sorry to bring you here on a summer day, but I had to get this done. As you guys could tell, you guys, I don't know if you guys use the car wash and if you use it over there on Lapeer Road. But when they built a building next to me, I really wasn't opposed to. I did bring up my objections. It was going to cover more of my building than it already did. And my building is under the new setbacks. They're all under the old setbacks. So now, and then the trees went up too, and I called Jack and said, Jack, I can't. With the trees going and this going, this is none of my doing. And to top it off, there's a new car wash down the street. So if they miss mine, they're just going to go to the one down the street. And the one down the street doesn't help me or doesn't help you guys either. I believe that's the village. I would think that's a different tax base. Am I correct on that? Right down the street. They're in a village block. That's what Jack told me. They're in a village. So we don't get any other tax dollars for any of our city things, right? And so, yeah, I'm just under a lot of pressure. It was nothing of my doing that I need the sign. And I took pictures from both sides. And it's really hard to see. It was always a little difficult, but now it's gotten really difficult. And if you pass it up, now I got competition that they can just turn into if they pass up my signs. So, yeah, I'm under a little stress for the people to see the building. We have customers complaining. As we drove up today, my wife missed it. So, yeah, that's what I'm up under. My signs actually would match up to where Louise is with the Realtor group right there. Same type of sign and the one where the party store used to be there. That sign there is the same type of sign. I just want the same variance they have so people can see the buildings.
So, for the record, can you just give your name and address?
Yeah, our name is Jetto Collage, and it's my wife Karen Collage. We're the owners of six four three South Lapeer Road, Al's Auto Wash, Oxford, and we live in Washington, Michigan.
Okay. Anything else?
No, that's it. Yeah, I did talk to Jack first. I go, Jack, I'm not asking for a lot. I just, I'm under a little duress here. I need clear signage for everyone, even, you know, the Oxford residents and also people that aren't from Oxford that use their wash to make it a lot simpler.
Okay. All right, with that, I will open the public comment. If there's anyone in the public that wishes to come speak? Hearing none, we will close the public meeting and bring it back to us for questions. Board member questions for the applicant?
That old sign where you have your old sign? Is it possible to put a pole sign there?
That's where we're going to put it. That was just a temporary one that we had put up. I don't know if you guys remember the semi. Thankfully, the mill ran right through there. Then when I looked, I don't know how that, if it was from the previous owner, that sign, I don't think was ever quite approved, but that's exactly where we're going to put it.
I had a question on your drawing that you provided to the board. You got ninety-five foot of frontage there, right? And I don't see the Oakland County Road Commission right away line on that. Do you know where approximately that is?
I don't, you know, and I know our sidewalk is set back further than the other two sidewalks, you know. When they made that turn, you know, because the extent, we now have a middle lane, and they assured me that what the engineer did for Oxford and the county, and they kept that turn the same for me.
Yeah, the gateway map has it pretty much along there on the sidewalk. Sidewalks on the inbound of the right of way is where it appears.
We're along that curb. How long have you been in this building? I know you remodeled it a number of years ago.
It's a pretty new building. I've been in it about seventeen years. Al Vasipio built it like eight years to ten years before that. So it's not that real old building, you know.
They had to change some of the drive and the way the vehicles flowed in that property back then.
They never had to change it. They had to change it to what, before it was built, from what I understand. From the site, yeah, we wanted an entrance. Yeah, so it's already kind of a tough turn. You do, you know, you're making, it's already a tough turn, and then now you can't see it. And once those trees bloom, it's going to be really, you know, difficult.
That's why I'm asking, right? I don't know what the history there is, but I see only one entrance. And really, you're using the adjacent properties as your exit coming out of your.
It's really, that's part of that is my property too. Yeah, but they made it that way.
Just like straight way down that drive? Is that?
Yeah, if you go where the curb is devised, my building, that's actually my property or her, but it's more my property. I put my dumpster there on there, and that is our.
You went on the other side of the curbing next to your back of your building?
Correct, yeah. Yeah. So it is a tough turn to begin with.
Do you know any of the history of why you couldn't put two drives there in and out?
We've been fighting with M dot. M dot said they put the stop to it. Al's attorney and then me and Bobby next door, Louise's son. We've been trying for years to give us an entrance there, even like when the dispensary for the marijuana houses come in. We talked to them at that. They just will not. The Michigan Department of Transportation will not give us.
And that wants less entrances, huh?
Yeah, that was before me.
And less is more, huh?
Yeah. But they've gotten used to it, you know. The customers have gotten used to it.
It's just real tight getting in.
Yes, real tight getting in. It's just right now with that building. Here, I took a few pictures to to show you guys. This is coming northbound. Can I approach?
Yeah.
This is coming northbound. That's the roof of my building. And you can't. You can see Louise's sign I circled, but I have no sign. Here you go. I make up for everybody. And that's what customers are seeing. And those trees are not in full bloom by next year. They will be. That's the top of my building. That's Louise's sign north of me. I'm just like, and then once those trees come in there, I'm really under hardship. And you can see Louise's sign coming up. So mine, would you be able to see mine?
This is your building.
Yeah. Yeah, that's all the shows of my building coming up.
Strawberry across here.
See, that's Louise's sign? So that would be right away. It would be just perfect, you know. It would really help everyone make that turn.
Do we know if Louise's sign fell under the grandfather?
It did.
It did, yeah. That thing's been there a while.
That's been there a while, right?
I used to self-communicate with the car wash. That thing's been there thirty years.
You know, that's, that's wouldn't be acceptable at this point if it was brand new or like.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. But it's just like with this, if it wasn't for the new building being extended and all the trees put in everything, I wouldn't even be here. But it was nothing that we did, that I did.
Now, can you give us maybe some reasoning why you want an eleven-foot-high sign?
Well, there too, there's snow coming in. We got to put the snow, if it's a, that, we put snow on that side and snow on the other side. If it's real low, it's going to be hard to put the snow anywhere, you know. And it'll match, because it would match all the signs going up and down the thing. I can do a lower sign, but then I probably need a little room to push it a little more forward towards the sidewalk. And it's easier to see coming in and out to make the left and rights the higher the sign is. If you get it about this high, it can be harder to see. Even with the snowbank, sometimes we have to go out and shut the snowbank down so it doesn't get too high.
Is it possible to use the space that you're using for the temporary sign to erect the new sign?
That's what we're proposing, yeah.
Oh, I thought it was back up there coming up.
Yeah, yeah. Let me show you where.
There's your old sign right here, that you're coming up here.
Oh, this one, this one here, that's so far set back. If you look in that picture, you can't even see it. It doesn't help at all. Because of the building, you won't, trust me, you won't see it. If I sent you right now, guaranteed, I bet you pass it up.
I just know that.
And you don't exactly remember that.
I know you're next to the marijuana dispensary.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
The existing sign you have there that's within the fifteen-foot requirement, right? What's the size of that sign that you have there now? Do you recall?
I didn't measure it. It's about six by, six by four, something like that.
So, I mean.
It's not even a marquee sign. People don't even know about that sign. That's, I don't even know why.
I think when I drive by your place or have, I mean, I see your name, I mean, bold, yellow letters straight across from roofline to roofline.
That's, that's under the canopy.
That's under the canopy, but this sign.
But as you approach, like I said, that's one door down from what, that's what you see right there. That's exactly what you see when you come up that road.
Yeah, I mean, we.
We get, every winter, we'll get people telling us, oh, I never knew it was here. I say, well, how'd you know it was here? Well, we saw the water trail coming out because you can't see the sign, you know. We, I mean, not, I'd say about half our business is from Oxford. The other half is from the surrounding communities. Some even from Metamora and further north. Yeah, it's, I wouldn't be, honestly, I would not be here if it wasn't for that new building and all the trees. There's a lot. And they're going to bloom. They're doing well, but they're going to really.
Can you maybe explain or give some reasoning to the board on why you wouldn't use the existing location and maybe increase the size or use that sign that you have that's existing versus coming to?
Yeah, yeah. It's so far set back, and with the two new buildings, they're still under the old setback rules. And then they made the new dispensary come on even further and higher. And then the trees and then the new car wash. I mean, like, I think if any of you guys were running it or worked one day, you'd be like, yeah, we got to help this guy, you know. I mean, even since the trees, we have several customers that tell us, man, what are you going to do with those trees? Like, I don't know.
I understand the concern with the trees, right? But if you put a sign there, that sign is going to get covered up with those trees.
No, it's not. You can look at the sign. You can see Louise's.
Yeah, I'm looking at.
And then that's, that's one door down. So once you go on your angle, once you go from that one door down, you go fifteen feet up, you will see it. Trust me. I look at it. I go every day.
One thing about this picture?
Yeah.
It's great if you're walking down a sidewalk.
Yeah, I didn't want to go on M twenty-four. I drive.
If you go on M twenty-four, you can see your sign. You can.
Yeah.
This is, this is kind of deceiving.
Yeah, if you go over, I drive. I look from over here.
I drive it every day. I've seen it.
Yeah.
You can see the sign.
The sign that's way back over there?
If you're at the ace, you can see your sign that's near your building as well.
Yeah, the ace, because you got the better angle. Correct. The picture I showed you, that's going northbound.
You're getting southbound, right?
No, that's going northbound right through that picture.
When you're driving southbound,
Yeah.
you can see your sign.
You could see it better going southbound. Correct, yeah. Most of the problems with the new, most of the problems going is northbound. It is.
No, I understand. But you can definitely see it further down north of your facility coming southbound.
Because the angle is probably twenty degrees different, you know.
Like, like the chairman bothered to point it out, your picture, if you came and took a picture from.
I thought about it, but if you're in a right lane, Mr. Chairman, you can't, it's hard to see. I don't think if you can see it right there, if you can see it at all from the right lane. The more you get towards the left, the more you can see it, but you're not going to drive down the center lane.
Sure, that's what we're going to do. I have to screen. I mean, typically for those commercial zones, you're going to have for the adjacent property to the south, you'd have a twenty-foot rebuild, which is required. So they're going to have to put trees along there to reach thirty-five feet. So I'm just wondering if you have that twenty feet and the trees are planted in the center of that at ten feet, trees are going to grow, right? But if you have that sign, isn't it going to be blocked by the trees that grows?
Not as much, too, because as you get closer, that sign is going to, it helps. It helps a lot.
My question is, could you put a sign like what the drawing here shows with the fifteen dollars on it on that piece where, because your sign right now sits, what, ground level?
Yeah, it's around the old sign.
Yeah, it's a ground, but it sits about as tall as me and you, yeah.
Okay, but if you took, you put a pole sign up and more illuminated like this one appears to be, because your old sign doesn't seem to be as illuminated as something like this would be.
That sign right there, we could drive there. It's not a good-looking sign. It doesn't, I don't know why they even spent the money on it. It, if it's on the ground, I'd rather go horizontal than the way that one looks. It's a horrible-looking sign. Like, if the competition, the cleanup sign, I could put something like that lower by the sidewalk. That size, you know, that they have, that's a nice-looking sign, you know.
Any way to reconfigure that outside radius? To give you some more room? It should come in, you make the turn, right? And then you turn, turn, go to the main way, that arc that's at your southwest corner.
To enter?
To exit, as your shoulder graphic here. Any way to modify this curb? You're going to put a sign in there. Can you tighten the skirt up? Pull some paper.
Well, is it, they were put it right there. You're saying, what is zero is on sixty? Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, that I could do. Yeah.
Just asking questions?
Yeah.
Well, that was proposed right there.
It's a long, but it's.
Yeah, you're saying, I see what he's saying.
Keep it in compliance. It's a possibility.
Yeah, give me the footage. The sign, it's out of all, I always like, I don't know what the earth thinks.
Because looking at these pictures, you know, like I was just mentioning him, once these get to be full size, I think they're going to cover even your new sign.
Like you said, you'd be a little angle locked because you'd be on a road. Look at Louise's sign.
Having the lower sign closer, even closer, you'd be under where these trees are going to start.
Yeah, that's what he's saying. That's fine.
Yeah.
Right.
See the sign underneath the tree?
Yeah, that's what the intent of the way the sign is working is why you have it at sixteen.
So the sign that you're proposing on here that you have is an acrylic, black in letter, push-through lettering, black vinyl, double-sided, illuminated.
Whatever you said on there, yeah.
Right.
Yeah. So it would be, then I would go a little wider than taller, but it would be the same square footage.
This is four foot by five. Twenty square feet. You're allowed thirty-two. You're allowed thirty-two.
Yeah, so I would probably need, yeah, if I could get a little, thirty-two would be a little, yeah.
I'm asking for more reasoning on why you wouldn't go to a thirty-two-foot or square-foot sign where you're currently located. I don't have any real good reasoning from you or hardship.
Oh, my God, I don't know what else, what reason. You can't see the sign.
Right now, your sign's not thirty-two square feet.
Oh, yeah, but it's the angle. That sign, you can't see till you, there's no way, especially with the trees.
I can see it going southbound. I can come, I know where you're located. I guess maybe that's why I'm probably at a disadvantage for you because I already know where you're at.
Yeah.
And I use your car wash a lot.
Yeah. I believe.
So I know where you're at.
Yeah, and it's different, yeah. She hasn't come up as much.
Trying to take it from the perspective of a new, you know, person coming into our township and seeing what your hardship is.
Yeah, because any business, you depend on a lot of new business because you gain customers and you lose customers. And any, in a corporation, GM, whatever, you're always trying to gain customers. Some move, some. So we need it to gain customers and to keep customers and to be safer. And it's not something I did, you know. It's something that I knew soon as that building, and then I seen all the trees. I'm like, yeah, I'm under hardship. No one else is, you know. But, yeah, that, it's going, with that sign there, you'll notice too, even though you're used to it, you're going to see, I guess this would be a good reason, you're going to see, if you guys let me put that sign there, you're going to notice that sign, you're going to notice the car wash sooner than you do right now. I'd say by a good fifty to a hundred feet.
From what I understand, from what you're saying, is that you would accept a lesser variance in what you're proposing here.
Yeah, like if we did on a ground one by there, yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah. Yeah, right in that spot.
So the height would come out of that equation for the variance that you're requesting, but the location would be something less than the fifteen-foot from the lot.
Lot length, right.
Like you were saying, it would be very similar, right, just on the ground? Am I thinking right, Chairman, or?
Yeah, we, you know, we've had the sign ordinance. It's a new sign ordinance. We've been pretty consistent.
We waited, yeah, because when I applied, they said wait because we're right in the middle of it, you know.
Yeah, we've been very consistent, and we've probably upset a few people over the years on some signage issues. You know, I know the neighbor to the north has that sign. It doesn't meet our ordinance requirements. Should he ever do something in there, he's got to put a sign that conforms.
Yeah.
And we've been pretty consistent about not wanting to raise our sign like to be consistent. Over time, I realized, yeah, it's there, but as a business owner, I want you to be successful. We all want you to be successful. So if there's a way to work something out.
Yeah, and it has a lot to do with safety. You guys, once that gets approved, the same gentleman's making, my sign is making the sign for the dispensary too. I don't know, I didn't ask him, I don't know where they're putting their sign, whatever. He makes top-notch quality, quality signs. He did, I don't know if you guys go to my Lake Orion store on Baldwin Road?
Yeah.
He made that sign too. That one has LED on it, and it's a pretty good-sized sign.
Any other questions, guys?
No.
All right, we're going to discuss this.
Okay, so thirty-two square feet.
Well, we're going to discuss.
Okay.
All right. The challenge for this, obviously, of a ground sign, I think we all are kind of, our preferences for a ground sign. We don't want it. Right. The challenge we have is what's that distance?
I mean, he also mentioned that the challenges of a ground sign is where the snow is going to go, right?
Yeah, but this has, he can work around that.
Yeah, I mean, obviously, you can move snow. Load or whatever you need to do.
Look, the original location, that's a ground sign.
Yeah, yeah.
Do they push snow on that? You know what I mean? It's, that current sign sits on an island by itself.
Yeah.
Yeah, it separates the entrance and exit. So what are the challenges?
Well, the challenge is going to be, we really don't know dimensionally if it's a thirty-two-square-foot sign, right? Six foot high?
Thirty-two, two and a half, one, twelve feet long? Thirty-six.
Or eight by four?
Eight by four. So where can that fit in dimensionally? I don't know. I don't know the answer. I know, I mean, I don't know where that would be, what our variance would be. You know, what dimension is a lesser variance?
He's proposing a four-foot wide by five-foot high.
Just, you squat it down, right? You take that sign and push it down.
Yeah.
I mean, you take it down.
Yeah.
But I think, I think where that pole is, if you look at one of the photographs, it's in the right, that pole where the foundation is, is right against the back, so it's not just dropping it to the ground. You'll have to push it south and potentially push it a little bit, maybe once, to get it fit in the rebuild. I don't know.
Well, there's already a spot there.
Yeah, but the pole would be on the foundation.
Bigger than that.
You just can't take it and drop that because it's a circular foundation, and you've got this four-foot-wide sign.
Yeah, you've got.
Yeah, I don't know positionally what we would be granted.
I can't really read that. It says five foot.
Five point oh five feet and then nine feet is what? That's for the sign, the top of the sign.
Right.
So if you're looking down, that's the dimension. You can't just, because of the way the sign is placed on that back of curb, it's going to drop straight down. It would be into the curb. So then either A, go and revise that curb line, or B, potentially maybe move it a bit south, maybe move it a bit east or west towards the road, make it fit.
Well, it looks like there's more room to the south if you.
I just don't know. I don't want to, I don't know if, dimensionally, give a number and be wrong.
Yeah, that's five and a half feet from that lot line, right?
Nine feet.
Right.
Why would it be more here rather than here?
I think we may be able to come back and give us a setback on what is lesser variance could be.
I just don't know. I don't.
We don't know what the variance would be at this point.
I don't want to have to have them come back, but I don't know what I would potentially be looking at.
Is this an existing concrete pillar here?
It appears to be.
Where the sign used.
It was used to be where the sign used to be.
Before the foundation.
Because I thought the original sign was back.
It's right there. See that?
Okay.
That's that.
So that's already there.
That's, that was the pillar. So like I said, he dropped that sign down. That sign was right to move forward this way. It may be able to stay there, but they have to come closer to appear, or he'd have to modify the curb line. I don't know what the space is. That's the problem.
From here, from the sidewalk to the curb line.
Port of John's covering up that sign.
John's.
Is that what that is, the port?
Yeah, that's the job. So.
I mean, I would be able to see the sign from this shot.
Yeah, you would. So? Four numbers? Which plus?
I don't really have a measurement for that, do I?
I'm not in favor of going higher. I like the six foot, and I, I think it's when these trees get another three, four years of growth to them, you're going to be covering a very expensive sign. I would be more in favor of a sign closer to the property line because it looks like the property line goes in the middle of this grass line here.
Essentially, that curb line you see where the hedge is, that's essentially the property line, what I can tell from the gateway.
So even to move that up closer to the property line but keep the six-foot height, I think would ensure that as you're driving up, three, four, or five years from now, you'll be able to see that sign. I think putting a higher sign even back here, you'll see it this year, maybe next year. But as these trees grow, I think you're going to cover it and do a disservice.
That was my thought as well.
So we're going to get the dimensions of what he needs for a variance for if he's going to go over.
Nothing we don't have. We don't know what is here.
There's five and a half, nine is going to change it, right?
I mean, there's a lot of things potentially.
It could be there.
It could be electric, it could be water, it could be some reason. We don't know. We don't know that.
There's no water or electric there.
Where the old sign was?
I don't know where the public.
We're talking about private east. Just, we're talking about private easements, potentially. Again, we don't know, I, we don't wanna be in a position to be putting and approving something that goes to an easement, you're not allowed to prevent or do that. Again, I don't, I'd like to see more information to be able to give us a number.
I do.
Some of these, I have to go out there, our code enforcement and building department's gonna have to.
This board's not gonna make up the number.
No? All right.
Yeah, I'm, I'm okay with variance, moving it much closer to the property line, but staying under the six feet, but yeah, how far off the property this way and this way? Cause then I think it would ensure.
Even ten years from now, you'll still. No, eventually it'll be built, you'll have it. It sits on the island, you know, we'll see. Yeah, I'm not in favor of a little foot high sign, I think, again, like you said, by the time those trees do grow, it will block, they are, appears to be an Armstrong maple, so it's very columnar in nature, it grows up. Not out, like most of those trees do. Looks like an Armstrong maple.
So, what do we need to do?
What would you suggest, I mean, we could go, go on this motion here, or we can have them come back and?
I would think we want them to come back.
That's what I.
Cause I don't think, we don't have enough.
Right, right.
I mean, obviously, they're not in favor of any sort of pole sign, so that has to hit the ground, which means it has to move one way or the other, or he's gonna modify curb. But you have to come back.
What about coming back with the new plan for the new sign and things, and get the measurements that they need?
Yeah.
And then come talk to, if they, well, there'll only be the variances that would be needed would be.
It would only be for the setbacks.
Yeah.
Well, I would, I would think that.
With the new sign designed and laid out, then we can see.
What setbacks, what, what variance is.
Where it would have to sit because of the easements and everything.
Yeah.
And then we just have to look at the setbacks.
Cause yeah, like I said, I'm, I'm okay with moving that.
Yeah.
Close to the property line.
Given, given the, given the geometry that's there.
Right.
And how that works, I, I think that is somewhat unique in that circumstance, and the visibility, and I, again, I get, I mean, signs are important for businesses, but again, you know, I don't, we're not gonna, we've not been in favor of a little foot high signs.
No, I definitely don't want nothing taller, sorry, you know?
So I guess.
When the neighboring businesses have to put in a new sign.
Then they have to follow.
Then they have to follow the, the new ordinance.
Exactly.
And if we give this gentleman or the applicant a, a variance to come closer to that lot line, there's gonna give reasoning for the neighbors to do that too, to keep their, their sign out closer to the pier road. We're trying to keep it fifteen feet up.
Yeah.
So I, just, just work for them.
Buildings are on a new setback, aren't they?
Fifteen feet?
It's fifteen feet.
So. But, you know, the, the applicant noted that there's, you know, in the line of sight, you're seeing the signs out closer to the pier road, which don't meet the fifteen foot setback now. So he may be setting the precedent too.
Well, it's, we have to determine if this is unique, right, in circumstances.
True, no, you're right.
That's gonna be the thing.
We don't want it to be snowballing and become slippery slope.
It varies very well, and I understand the uniqueness of this property, um, but that's something that we may have to explain to, you know, down the road. Or have somebody else explain it.
But everybody, I mean, if you're starting from scratch, if you scraped this property, putting a sign in there, meeting the requirements, you're complaining for it.
Absolutely.
If you were to build this, if you were to build a car wash today, now you build a car wash today, you probably couldn't, because of the setbacks that would be required, the rebuilds. It's twenty feet, so it almost makes this property un, un, unbuildable, right? You apply all the current standards. So. So I think we'll move it towards a postponed.
If that's okay with the other guys.
Please, please come back up. I think you understand our dilemma.
Yeah, so I, I really don't wanna move that curb, so I'd probably.
You can go back to like this, go back to, so he can pick you up, he gets mad at me, he gets mad at me if you don't.
Oh, okay.
He scowls at me.
Yeah, uh, I really don't wanna move the curb, but I'd rather shorten the side, maybe go just a little higher, I don't wanna move the curb, that's, yeah, that's a, that's a project.
What we would like is obviously a sign that meets the height requirement.
And you said it was six feet?
It's six feet high, it's the ordinance required.
Yeah.
Um, I know that area's kind of curve linear and.
Yeah, there's quite a bit of grass there, so it shouldn't be a.
Find a place for it where it fits, the best that it can.
Yeah.
Um, we would like to see as close as possible to fifteen feet, I mean, I realize you wouldn't like to remove the curb, but, you know, sometimes we may have to do stuff we don't like, so do the best you can, I would say.
Yeah, there, there's quite a bit of, of grass over there, and on that side, nobody, that's just the exit, nobody really, anyway, they curbed it off where I'm putting that sign, nobody can go on that other side of that building, I don't know if you guys noticed the.
No, it's all part of the inside.
Yeah, so there, really, it's not gonna be.
It's all green belt up front, so you don't have cars or anything.
Yeah, so it's not.
It shouldn't block that sign in that location.
Yeah, so it's not.
And we're still, we're still gonna, again, review this on the merits of potentially granting a variance, we still have to.
Yeah, yeah, I knew that, yeah.
We're giving you suggestions on what you do.
Yeah.
I don't know what these folks will vote, and how they'll vote, but we're, that's, that's our direction to you, so if you can come back with a plan, showing what you're doing, sign being six foot high, meeting our ordinance requirement for square footage.
Yeah.
And wherever the setbacks are.
That's the one reason we went with the, the highway, we knew the other ones, we knew it would be easier as far as the setbacks being up on the pole, that's why we, we thought that'd be easier for us and, and for you guys, you know?
We like ground signs.
What do I know?
And that's just speaking for me, yeah, sorry, so, do you have enough direction?
Yeah, yeah, so, but, do you guys have those, like the, the feet and everything?
It's in the ordinance, section eighty-five.
Oh, no, I mean, like, where, on my property, where those lines are.
The property lines?
You're gonna have to get a surveyor.
Yeah, we have the property lines, but like, uh, but you're saying those are, you know, how, how far, it gotta be nine feet, it's from the sidewalk, it says.
Well, the ordinance requires you to be fifteen feet from property line, property lines, right away and.
Okay, all right.
In that space, that greenbelt space, you're gonna have to find an area.
Okay.
That you can put that sign, that.
We'll try, we're gonna do our best, but I, I'm gonna get it through one way or another, I don't care how high, I gotta take it up, I'm gonna get a, a sign there, you know? And, but it'll be a ground sign, if you guys work with me, we'll get it, but I, I, I'll do whatever it takes, whatever I got, whatever court I gotta go to, I will get it done, you know? But, uh, I'll, I'll get the best I can, if I can go a little, a little bit up, but I, on that, on that plot of grass, I'll, I'll fit it on here.
Okay, um, so I think you know what to do?
Yeah.
Come back with a plan, dimensions, showing.
Yeah, my sign guy, and I'll have, very similar with just, uh, the drawings, but.
And I would ask you to find if there are any easements that are adjacent to the right away line.
Water electricity.
Water electricity, cause we don't, we, we don't put these signs in there, so they create more of a challenge?
Yeah.
I'm just trying to help you, actually, I know, you seem like a probably not, but really.
No, no, I know, you got your job, that's fine.
So, with that, I wanna make motions for a postponement.
I think what you want to make sure to do is to postpone it until a meeting to be scheduled by the building zoning department, allowing for proper notification. Cause I'm not sure what Cheryl's requirements are to re-notice this.
Okay, okay.
I think it has to be fifteen days.
Yeah, just wanna make sure that you don't tie her to something that can't be met.
Right.
Okay, so.
Okay.
Who wants to make that motion?
Postpone until a future meeting to be scheduled by the building and zoning department, allowing for proper notification.
So moved.
Wow, thank you, Susan.
You're welcome.
On your favor? On your favor, aye, opposed?
So I'll go about the same thing I did here with the new.
Yep, bring back a more detailed plan, showing us what you're looking for.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to, I gotta make board member comments?
Comments?
Motion for a chairman?
So move.
Second?
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Closed.